Okay, welcome to the planning board. Um, meeting will... What's that? We have a joint meeting between the planning board and the zoning board tonight, starting at 7:40. A motion to open the meeting.
No motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so first up is gonna be, what we didn't do last night, is... We have an A&R for 166 Main Street. This has continued from... October, so... Can you see on this? Did you see this? Uh, yeah, I saw it. I'm gonna ask the board, do they have any comment?
Uh, do you need the timestamp for May? Make sure we got it.
Yeah.
Is it back somewhere?
Yeah, it should be.
That's, that's the front line. It's right here.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Uh, timestamp for May, October 7. So the application from John McCombs, the rest of the area. So the A&R parcel. The only question that we had, we've run through this. On the Mylar, did the engineer stamp the plan?
No, 'cause I think you...
You don't need a stamp on it.
I don't need it, but we were wondering if he was gonna do it.
You don't need it, and I didn't even realize I had the Mylar, so...
So it's on that?
I didn't go, uh...
Yeah, we're not gonna need a stamp for them.
So, uh, it meets the, uh, area and dimensions for the current, for the A&R.
Mm-hmm.
I think we should approve it as just such, and then kick it over to the, when he goes for the permits, over to zoning enforcement for when he fills that out, and make sure it complies with zoning.
Okay.
So...
John? Do you have all of this, do you, uh, need a comment?
Uh, no, I haven't seen the, did it change from the last time we saw it?
No.
No? Okay.
Well, it did change. Uh, lot 17A, the whole back, is now gonna be with that second lot.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's what we talked about last time.
Yeah, so that's, that was the, the mod. Jim? You okay with this?
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, so we'll take a, a vote in favor of accepting the A&R on Main Street, 166 Main. Do I have any motion?
Motion.
Motion to accept?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can hear this, it passes?
Do you have the original Form A, so you can endorse it?
Yeah, we're gonna need the original Form A and the Mylar. If you wanna leave that, we'll pick it up tomorrow.
Alright.
Will she accept the, uh...
Yeah, she will.
Okay.
She's tough.
Alright, I need...
Brad, you wanna sign up?
Yeah, I don't know.
I need Planning Board to come up here and endorse the A&R plan. Sharpies.
I'm altering. I'm gonna alter it this time.
One A.
Hey, you know, look at it, you have a lot of things to do tonight.
Just bam.
And then you need to... And then you need to sign this, this as well. No, you need to sign both. Thank you. I can't tell how stressful it's gonna be.
I don't know, she was answering my, you know, something.
I was. I was answering everyone, you know, it looks like it's stressful. It's very difficult to coordinate 10 people.
Yep, I'm good, thank you.
You're welcome.
You get the top one.
So John, this piece of paper, you gotta stand by the planning board, so I'll step out and let you... Call set up, and then you can do...
There's what?
Tomorrow.
Yeah, that's why I'm just doing that.
Okay, where can we get that note?
You don't put it on this?
Yeah. It's no disambiguation of compliance rules on your plans. We have put it on a recent one. Yeah, we put it on a recent one.
So that's not stamped? Yeah?
So we're looking for a general, a wide use for it.
And I'll get this to you.
Don't get the last prime. Are you doing, um, doing thumb drives nowadays, or are we doing CBA?
Definitely thumb drive. Oh, I already have that.
On electronic?
Yep.
Indoors?
No, because...
Right. Excellent. Very good. Thank you. Good day.
Alright, moving on. Public hearing continue for application 2023-1, 20 Beer Hill Road, 0 Beer Hill Road, Cedar Dale Tennis Club. Selco partnership with Verizon Wireless requires a variance from the provisions of Section 50-4.5 permit a use in the IRA district, Section 50-6.3 B3 to permit a wireless communication facility outside of the wireless communication district, and Section 50-8.1 table of dimensional requirements to increase the maximum height by the zoning Groveland bylaw. Also, we have a new application, 2023-1, 20 Beer Hill Road, AKA 0 Beer Hill Road, Cedar Dale Tennis Club. Selco partnership DBA Verizon Wireless requests a special permit in accordance with Section 50-6.3 B3 to permit a wireless communication in the Groveland zoning bylaw. Application will be, the applicant will be also applying with the planning board for site plan review. Okay. So I guess we have counsel.
Great, thanks. So, uh, when we were in here, I'll talk into the mic. Thank you, Mike Chaimo, uh, representing Verizon, and, um, I've, I've got Chip Fredette and Sohail Umani here. Uh, if you have, uh, technical questions or questions about the engineering. So, um, we were here about a month ago, and one of the things that I, we set up was this balloon test, which was conducted over three days last week. I've, uh, I've provided Annie with the, uh, visual studies that came out of that balloon test, but hopefully at least some of you got a chance to see it in real life. You know, judging from these visual studies, it looks like it's a pretty good site from a visibility standpoint in terms of, uh, not being very visible at all throughout the, throughout the town. Um, there's a couple of places where, where it is visible from. That study, the front part of that study, it shows maps showing, first, uh, through little yellow streaks where in town the top of the pole would be, uh, with trees. And second, if all the trees were cut down, uh, you know, based just on topography, where you could see it from. There's a lot more of that, but of course, the town has a lot of woods, so it's not, that's, that's not apt to be an issue. After that, it shows individual sites, um, by photograph number, so there's a map with all the numbers on it. And if you scroll through or, or flip through, um, you can see, uh, for two of those sites, I think it's Photo 3 and Photo 17, it was visible, and they did a superimposed tower on the picture. For the rest of them, uh, the tower was not visible from those other sites.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, we're, we're here, and, and for the folks on the planning board who weren't here the last time, we're, we're here on a, uh, on a use variance from zoning, which is not something that the zoning board typically grants in Groveland, but you have a wireless bylaw with an overlay district. This site is not in the overlay district, there's nothing nearby that's in the overlay district, and Verizon needs coverage in that part of the town. And so, there have been cases in federal court where because of the Telecommunications Act, the court has said, well, even if a town can't normally grant a use variance, they can grant a use variance to avoid a violation, what would be a violation of the Federal Telecommunications Act of prohibiting service in a certain part of town. So, uh, what Verizon's tried to do here is identify a site that is gonna have minimal impact, and that serves the area where, uh, it needs coverage, and that area is in the area surrounding, uh, where the site, where the site is. What we've also done is we've designed a site that meets the standards of your, um, your zoning bylaw for towers, so even though we're not in the district, we've satisfied the standards that would apply to a tower if it was in the district. Um, and, and we've also selected a site where we don't have to cut a driveway very far or anything because we've located it behind an existing parking area served by an existing driveway, um, and with the ability to preserve some screening around the base of the tower, because it's in an existing wooded area. If you want me to, I can walk through the standards, or if you, if you want me to respond to questions, uh, you know, we can proceed whatever is most efficient for you.
What is the definition of that case law, federal? That the law?
The, the, the Federal Telecommunications Act says a municipality can't prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting service. So that means if we were to apply to you for a, a permit within your, uh, zone, for example, within your overlay zone, and you turned us down, and it meant we couldn't provide service anyplace, that would be a violation of the federal law. The same thing if you have a, a bylaw like you do that doesn't provide for any coverage in a section of town. There's no way for us to come in and ask you for a special permit because you don't have a, a bylaw. So there's a couple of options I guess we would have. You know, one is what we're doing here, which is to ask you for a use variance. Some towns can grant use variances. Your bylaw is written in a way that you can't grant use variances normally, um, but for purposes of a wireless facility, there have been several other towns, including some towns in Massachusetts, where, uh, the zoning board has granted variances for use to allow a tower or wireless site, because if they didn't, then the carrier would be able to sue them and win in court, and, um, the court has upheld those variances when, and a butter, for example, may have challenged them. So, uh, the federal court has said, basically, the federal law overrides the local zoning in that respect, if needed to avoid a violation of the, of the federal law.
Is that like the Spectrum Act? Spectrum? Set?
It's not quite the Spectrum Act, because the Spectrum Act has to do with if you've already got a wireless pole, and you're allowed to extend the pole or co-locate on it. This is the, the Telecommunications Act that passed back in 1996. Probably, you know, one of the reasons you have this overlay bylaw was to control where in town you could put these towers. The problem with, with the bylaw is it doesn't really provide for anything up in this corner of town. It's pretty good on the south part of town and the, uh, the west part of town, but this corner of the town, there is no location where we can go. The nearest location is, what, a couple miles away, Chip?
Yeah, at least, it's town-owned property, uh, and then the commercial industrial zones, which were, were pre-Porri there, so, uh, the, the map here that we have up, uh, it really speaks volumes.
Again, Chip Fredette on behalf of Verizon Wireless. The, the map that we have up here kinda speaks volumes to that. So, um, in the center of the map, you'll see the, the phrase here, Groveland 2, 115 foot above ground level, and then this blue, uh, icon signifies the proposed site up, up at Cedar Dale. So, initially, when the RF engineers, the network design engineers say, geez, Chip, we, we need a new cell site in this area, 'cause the white area is all void of coverage, um, they give me this direction, I go out and look for a site in that white area. Um, you know, we've got a site here, we have a site here, okay? And you can see the signal strength by yellow and green. Again, the white area is not completely void of coverage, but, uh, substandard, and so, um, to provide coverage to here within your, within your zoning would mean we'd have to be where we already are. It doesn't, it's a puzzle piece that doesn't work, so...
So that's Holly Lane, Talashia, that whole area?
And then, um, okay, so here's before and after, right? So there's, uh, there's without it, and then, and then here's with it, so...
Where's, um, do you have any towers in Georgetown Square?
Georgetown Square. So Georgetown, downtown here? Yep.
You do?
Yep.
That's like the biggest drop-off point, right there.
Yeah, right here, on Seven Star Road?
As soon as you pass through the square, the light, whatever call you got, it doesn't carry over.
Uh, coming back north to home, or?
North and south, coming through, you're gonna get a drop right there.
Yep.
Or service in there, but that would also branch up north. Is that one of your target sites, too?
Uh, so, the Georgetown downtown site at 60-foot elevation here, um, you're right, it doesn't go much past this pond here, this lake.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so, this site will...
You still have a lot of white, though, even if you put the, even where you do put the tower, right?
That's right, yeah, so we've got, it's proposed to be with, so mo, mo, well, for the last 20 years, most of the carriers have developed four sectors, I'm sorry, three-sector sites. So, uh, look, look at any tower site that we've ever seen before.
Triangle at the top.
Triangle at the top, right? Uh, a lot of the carriers now, including Verizon Wireless, are saying, geez, maybe we oughta go with a four-sector, so a, a square instead, so you could provide more coverage to that 360-degree area. Uh, and so we've got one pointing almost due south, it's almost northeast-southwest, the azimuth configuration. Uh, and you're right, there is some white down here. Now, um, I'd be speaking out of school if I was talking about signal strength and that kinda thing. I'll let Sohail answer those questions, but, um, again, because there's white, that doesn't mean there's no coverage, it just means it's not optimal, yeah.
But I mean, I, obviously, I think Verizon's gonna end up having to look for a site in that, in that area, probably.
That's correct, someplace over here. Again, there's the white area, Chip, go find us another one, so...
But, but the point of this site is to connect to what they've already got, and to improve service in, in that area, and, uh, you know, it may help with the, the issue you've talked about, but it's not, um, it, it doesn't look like it's gonna get all the way there all the time.
What about putting up, uh, the can repeaters on existing poles versus putting up a new tower? So look into that.
So, yeah, so I mean, those are bo, those are both strategies. In order to make those, they call them small cells on the utility poles. In order to make those work, you have to have the macro coverage, the overriding coverage. Those, those, um, cans or, or small cells, they have a very limited range, maybe 500 feet, and they really are designed to cover areas along roads where there's a lot of traffic, take some of the load off of some of the, the towers that are providing the macro coverage in that area. If you don't have any macro coverage at all in the area, or very limited, like, like in, um...
The current situation here.
Those, those small cells are not, um, you know, they're not gonna do anything for you. And so the way the network designs its network, with the way the RF engineers design the network, they provide the macro coverage, and they sometimes can fill in underneath if there's little spots. So, you know, perhaps the spot that you talked about.
There's a lot of them, uh, when you start running a series of those, I believe they're running like every couple hundred feet, going through the system, so you could really get a lot of coverage in those areas.
So, Sohail, do you wanna, do you wanna address the, kinda the, the small cell, and we'll let a real RF engineer talk instead of Chip and me?
Good evening, Sohail Osmani for the record. So you're right, uh, small cells can, um, provide coverage if placed in a, in a linear fashion or along a highway, or not, not a, not a good idea to, to place them in a, an interstate highway, but, you know, along a busy road, main road. But they are, like, you could consider as a sponge that will absorb the traffic capacity, just where, wherever... So, for instance, you know, a town like Lawrence Downtown or Boston Downtown, I would put several small cells if there, if, if there's, uh, capacity issues there. But the umbrella coverage is provided by the sector site, because it ha, it, as you can see, you know, on, on the other slide, or, or just this one, even for that, for this, for the, you know, representation purposes, this has a huge coverage footprint. If you look at the scale, you know, it's providing about two miles with just one site location. If I had to cover all this area with small cells, I'd, there'd be, I'm guessing, at least 50, 60 small cells to provide same amount of coverage. You'd, you'd get more capacity, no doubt. But in order to, to fill in all the gaps, i- it's very difficult with small cells.
So with the existing, where are your existing section Groveland? I imagine one of them's here.
The, the black, um, shapes that you see, the three triangular shapes?
Yeah, so where is that exactly?
Chip, do you guys know this?
I...
That's, um, behind 833 Salem Street, I believe.
Chaka, right?
No, my property.
So, so Town Hall, and we have, uh, Chakas.
I believe it's...
Okay, off a school street.
Salem.
And then, Salem Street, sorry. And then we have, um, the next site that you have is in Georgetown Square, which I imagine's on that church. Is that about right?
Georgetown Square is 7 Andover Street. Yeah, Groveland is 8 King Street in the steeple, and then 833 Salem Street.
Okay, so that's, alright. And then Georgetown is the church.
Yeah, Long Hill Road, Vault, Date Road, and then 7 Andover Street.
7 Andover, okay, 7 Andover's the church, I believe. Uh, it's, it's in a steeple. So, so actually, going north from Georgetown Square, which is also gonna go, if that, if that's sort of like your west on your calendar, correction, on your, uh, chart, there, uh, it's gonna blanket in that area. So, along North Street in Georgetown, what do you got up there?
I think we're jumping...
Yeah.
Tom lines.
That's the backside.
That's Holly Lane, Talashia, probably right into...
Right, so if you're, if you're heading up North Street in Georgetown...
It's only got a mile radius, right?
It's gonna go the back, but they already have systems, but I'm just asking questions here, because since they already have existing systems in Georgetown, okay? And they put the mini-can repeater system up North Street, which is also a dead spot, okay? That filters in west, once you go up North Street. It'll filter in west to some of that area. So, my question is, is, have you looked into that first? Or is this just your plan, and you're gonna first stay here, get in the briefing here, sorry? Is that your plan, just to go with that, and then filter around the east side of that tower, with your small can sites to fill in that area, or do you plan on another tall tower?
Yep, good, good question. So, as Sohail alluded to earlier, um, it's critical for any of the carriers to, first, to deploy an ample umbrella or macro network, provided by cell, traditional cell sites that we, like we see every day. This area here, uh, that would also be served by probably another macro or a traditional cell site like we see every day. The problem with trying to use small cells, those cans that we put on utility poles, in a town like this, I, I live in New Boston, New Hampshire, my town's the same way. We have a ton of hills, lots of woods, um, and small cells have no place in New Boston. We, we're implementing s, uh, small cells in Manchester, Portsmouth, Portland, Boston, Haverhill, Lowell, Lowell, Lawrence. Cities, because it picks up the, literally the foot track, and people walking down the street and sidewalk, and there it is. I, I would argue it would take more than 60 cell sites, 60 small cell sites to provide, to replicate this footprint, because the small cells don't penetrate the trees, because you're 18, 20 feet, and you're, whereas the, the cell site itself is above the tree and looking down. It penetrates the, the foliage better. So, we could, we could line seven-star row of small cells, and you'd have a, a narrow corridor of coverage, maybe, running along that, there.
And you also don't have coverage for houses that are set far back from the road, for somebody who's, you know, walking in the woods, walking on their farm, going down the river, whatever?
Well, I'm curious. Who's your cell service? Who's your service? I don't drop.
Oh!
Oh, question I ask you is...
That's mine, too, but I don't drop.
I actually live at Seven Star Road.
Well, no, it's, it's, uh...
So, would you not be opposed to add small canisters down along that street?
It, it wouldn't be effective.
It wouldn't work.
It wouldn't work, yeah.
So the tower would supersede and override it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so in, in rural areas like, like Groveland, or anywhere in the North Shore for that matter, uh, except Newburyport. Newburyport, we, we might be doing small cells, but, um, in this kind of area with so much tree cover and so much topography, um, the small cell just wouldn't work from a telephone pole. Unless you're standing directly beneath it, sorry, it's...
What's the signal angle from the antenna? So zero plane, or is it, is it a step down, two, three degrees?
There's down tilt.
But what's the down tilt?
Do you know what we're designing for this one here? For down tilt?
Two degrees?
It's probably two degrees.
It's electrical down tilt.
Okay, so what's the bandwidth on the amount of calls it can hold before frequency saturation?
Um, I think it's 10 megahertz each for each frequency, and there are numerous frequencies coming out of the same antenna, so you would have 700 megahertz. I think I explained that last time.
That's still a rural part of town, though, too.
So you've got, on, on this chart, you have the yellow, which is, um, the AWS or the 21 megahertz, and green is the 700 megahertz. And then there's also PCS, which is 1900 frequency band. Then you've got 850 megahertz, um, and, as well as, um, getting into 5G, if this site will have 5G, then you would also get, um, you know, 3.5 gig, or, or some combination of that.
So you have multiple frequencies to handle the bandwidth, but...
Coming out of each antenna.
Yeah, so you shouldn't saturate that like you do other, other areas unless it's a seven and a half kilometer there, but I don't.
Annie, did we have any, uh, a butter or town feedback from the crane test?
No. I haven't heard a single thing from anyone about the crane test.
That was the other, you know, the subjects that you show, um, pictures. We have leaves on the trees.
That's right, that's right.
What's it gonna look like in another month? Will you be able to see it? You know, we, we, there was a crane in there when it was, you know, full foliage.
Right. I, I don't know the answer to your, I don't know the answer to your question.
There's a couple residents that are going to be right there as the butters, you know, so that would be...
Yep. I think that the, the U-SHED shows, is it Nor, uh...
Norland?
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about, Wally. You have a sheer driveway to the left of Cedar Dale that has like three or four houses on it. That, that's actually looking down. And I think it's on page...
Who's gonna be the, um, is it Cedar Dale that's...
Cedar Dale's gonna own the tow, oh, actually...
He's gonna own the tower, you're gonna send the fee to them?
Uh, no, we, we own the tower, we rent, we rent the ground space.
We lease the space, yeah.
Yeah, we lease the land from them.
Is that gonna be the only, um, carrier on the town?
Uh, well, Verizon's building it for, we're building it for ourselves, for our network. We expect that the town will require that we design the foundation and the tower strong enough to suit X number of future, two, two...
They just want the top of the tower.
Yeah.
Yeah, they want the top.
Does anyone else?
With three carriers, right?
Know who you're gonna put up there?
Uh, no, no.
I think you said that it was...
They, they can fend for themselves.
Yeah, yeah, but it was, it was three...
I know you're bidding for AT&amp;T.
Well, actually, you know, Verizon, who was part of AT&amp;T, it all started with moving the telecom and telegraph, so it goes way back, and then it was branched off, you know, in the 60s and 70s when the, when the bells were taken over, so it's actually, we're all one and the same.
So the tower's gonna be...
How many users do you have in that area?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that, and I bet, and my guess is that Verizon would say that that's proprietary customer information, that I, that they don't, they don't even share with me the subcontract.
I was just gonna say 100, or? I mean, it's not that many people in town, so...
I don't, I don't know. What I do know is that, uh, they wouldn't put, foot the bill for a new cell site if it wasn't, wasn't, they didn't see it was worth it, so... So, how many rings of, uh, six, is this being built, 4-3, just to commemorate service? This, this is four arrays at the 15 levels. But there was three levels of, right? There could be, yeah, up to three levels on... Three levels. Do you have the board that shows the, the tower itself? It's the backs, yeah.
So, so it's designed to have two other carriers?
Yeah, it's a three-carrier maximum, let's put that.
Maybe that's the carrier.
I, I got a signal. Even this concrete bunker.
So the, the question about the butters over by Cedar Dale. Are they gonna, you know, is it going to be visible to that little... Are they gonna, you know, is it going to be visible to that little s-
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a bit of a crystal ball question. Yeah, there is tree cover, this, it, it's surprisingly, uh, the healthy stand of pines they have up there. Yeah, I, you know, uh, I can't say, uh, what there is in terms of hardwood coverage between their houses across the parking lot to the, to the cell site. There's a lot of pavement between their houses and, and, uh, and the actual site itself, so.
Okay, any, any other board members zoning?
I couldn't see the, uh, the crane, I went up to see it. And, uh, my wife and I went up, and going up the driveway to Cedar Dale, I couldn't see it until I got over the crest of the driveway, heading down into the parking lot.
I went to see it, but by the time I got there, the crane was gone.
My daughter lives on Holly Lane, and you couldn't see it from any part of Holly, like, right behind Cedar.
I was surprised you couldn't see it from Holly Lane. They couldn't see it, I couldn't see it.
No, couldn't see it, we looked, you know, they walked all the way up the street, and nothing.
To, to your point, full, full foliage still there.
Right, right.
I'd be surprised if those folks could see it, where Ronnie Weeks used to live.
Correct, that, that neighborhood over there.
I, I don't, boy, I don't, I don't wanna say, no, they won't see it, but I don't think they will.
Okay.
The other thing is, it's, I, I say only, I know I'm desensitized to a little bit, but it, I say it's only a hundred and twenty feet tall. You know, there's pine trees up there that are ninety, easily.
Yeah, and that's-
You know, there was a time when we would be in front of you guys, looking for a hundred and seventy, a hundred and ninety-foot tower, that's a different, different story altogether, here, it's, it's only one twenty, it's not, yeah. I think the one up back here is a hundred and twenty, isn't it, Andy, this one here? So, yeah, so perspective, it's the same height as the monopole that's in the backyard here.
So that's gonna be a breakaway pole, right?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, it's gonna meet all the ASTM standards and, and all the electrical standards, everything.
And there's a fall zone?
Um, yeah, I mean, de facto, because there's nothing around there other than the parking, but it's, but it's, you know, within, within that height, yes, there's a fall zone.
Are you sticking with a, uh, a gray color with that, based upon, yep?
Yes, that's correct.
I've seen some of the brown ones.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be galvanized steel.
Steel, yeah, I've seen both colors now.
Yep.
Different places want different things, I mean.
Yeah, the pine tree one didn't.
Hard to get those cited where it's-
Black hole.
That was solved their problem.
Which was one of the ideas for here. Uh, I have a zoning question, okay? So Cedar Dale, I believe, is grandfathered, because it's in the yard district, uh, district, so how is its business certificate, since it made, I don't know if it predates something, but it's on in the commercial zone, which is why you guys need to be there, so, does anybody know the answer to that question?
I don't know the answer to their status, but they could be in a pre-existing non-conforming.
I was gonna say, it's gotta be pre-existing non-conforming, yeah.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's their certificate, and their, and their grandfathering, so, um, so my question is, um, instead of a variance, if, and there's no one here representing Cedar Dale? I take it, so, um, would it behoove Cedar Dale in your project to notch that piece out as a pre-existing non-conformant and flip it over to the, a commercial for that one particular parcel? It's not necessarily spot zoning, because it's a pre-existing non-conformant versus, because then it would comply with the full regulation instead of the ZBA issuing of areas.
We'd have to be within the overlay district is the problem, so, and we're not in the overlay.
Right.
But that's a, but it, it could be, uh, there's, there's, we'll look into that later, but is this just a preliminary question? Has that come up yet?
No, I mean, there's a, there's a, there's a- No, no, I think what, what he's asking is, if you did a zoning change to put it in the overlay district, then you could come in for a special permit, but-
Correct.
You don't have a town meeting until the spring.
When do you guys wanna get going on this? Yeah, it was a chuckle, was that, is that the answer?
As soon as possible, that's what I'm told.
I think that's a last month response.
So when, when are you anticipating starting the, the project?
Um, it, it's a difficult question to answer, um, we're asked to move, move these through, uh, leasing, permitting, get to that building permit statement as quickly as possible, that way, we can then say, okay, if, if that, if we were to get our permit, um, in December, uh, well, we're not gonna build in December, we'd be looking at springtime after mud season's over, you know, um, so, uh, hopefully next summer would be the goal. And, and there's some jockeying around Cedar Dale's own schedule that we'd have to work with them on, uh, parking is pretty tight up there for them, so.
That's their busy time, yeah.
We told them we'd honor that, yeah.
What is it, about a three-day project?
They're, they're about three days, yeah.
Three days, I don't know.
Three, three, no, no, it's, it's about six weeks.
You gotta build those.
Yep, yeah, actually, you know what, I, I take that back, here, because the road is already built, it might, it might be, it might be three to four weeks.
Okay.
Yep.
Wally's question, do you, uh, I don't think we-
No, I mean, I mean, it, it hasn't come up, I mean, again, you know, I, I don't think we wanted to wait until town meeting to, to address it.
No, it's already, it's a standard use already, so.
Because again, my question is, is, uh, is futuristic on a couple of fronts. One is, it, it'll help Cedar Dale get into compliance as a pre-existing non-conformant, expand the overlay, and you've got another tower you wanna put somewhere, okay? Uh, on the other side of town, I think it is, right?
Yeah, but that has nothing to do with Cedar Dale.
We don't have a site for, for-
That Cedar Dale's only gonna hold one site.
Right. Cedar Dale's gonna hold one site, but you, you have two things going, you have the overlay district for the cell towers, and then you have Cedar Dale itself, that's been operating as a pre-existing non-conformant, okay? And now we have a first application on the property that's different than Cedar Dale's, so it's kinda like a two-in-one, trying to roll it in, not to deny it, but to accept it, and then to, um, to get it into there, so, and then where they have a future site particularly in town, I don't know where that is, okay, if they pin that out, but both of those areas could go into a cell tower overlay district, and that may complete the coverage for the town, but we don't have to do this again. So, that's a futuristic question.
I think that's a question for town council.
Not necessarily town council, it's, it's what the town wants to do with itself. The town council question is the pre-existing non-conformant, and is it easier to pull this thing in, and futuristic expand out the cell tower bylaw, which I was part, part of writing, and why we did it.
I, I don't think that we wanna go there, I think that use has been existing before, God, I don't know.
No, no, we're not gonna change it.
No, but I-
They accept it in, but they have a, they now have an application in front of us that now changes that. It's on the same property, okay, so you're, you're adding, so now it's not, it's just like-
So you just wanna bring them into the board?
Bring them, bring them in, and cover them, and then they have that area, okay? Or, as he mentioned, expand out the cell tower overlay district to include that particular area and that other area. Now, I was on when we wrote that.
Uh, okay.
But let me tell you why we wrote it.
Hold on, I wanna be quick, what advantage to the town of changing the use that's been pre-existing non-conforming since probably the fifties?
It would only be that particular parcel to bring it into compliance, because they now have a current application, and just you have to comply with the zoning at the time of the application.
I think that, if you're zoning for one parcel, that fits the spot zoning definition, though, which we can't do.
But are you, not if you bring it in into compliance, so that was, and that's not-
We don't need to bring it into compliance, why would we?
Right.
Right, that, that's what the variance covers, and that, because, non-compliance, right?
Yeah, but we don't, this is about the cell tower, this isn't about Cedar Dale and their business.
Right, right.
But you, you granting, you're applying for a variance to the cell tower bylaw, okay? And then putting a cell tower in a residential area, so you, you got two things you're going at. And then we have the special permit process to go look at the other stuff that you next got back there.
They're gonna put it in whether you like it or not, it sounds like.
I'm not here to deny a cell tower coverage, I'm here to, to do something that we couldn't do when we wrote that, okay, before, and one of the things was, the, the towers were huge, we were trying to keep them in commercial areas, okay?
But it's not a more than one twenty.
So, so if these guys know exactly where that other one's going, the town-
I don't think we do.
What other one? They're not putting in another one in town.
Did you just say you were putting another one in on the outside?
I mean, I, I think that's the, the issue here, we're, we're, the, the, any proposed future sites aren't in scope right now.
No, no.
And just to be clear, I mean, what, what we were talking about was, there is a gap there, presumably they're gonna need something, but we don't have anything in the pipeline-
That was my question.
Or anything identified. I wish that I did, because I appreciate the housekeeping you're trying to do, yeah.
Well, no, that's, well, that's a town issue, so, so we can, we can address that later.
Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, that's a discussion for now.
Here's the other alternative, here's the other alternative to that.
I don't know, yeah.
AT&amp;T, T-Mobile may get out in front of us and find a spot in that southeastern corner.
We're maybe in the next town, right?
Yeah, it might not even be in Groveland, so, uh, it, uh, there might be a lot of effort on your part, uh, for not.
Correct.
Well, my, my question is, since you guys are doing the surveys, if you guys had, and, and because you're doing all the frequency counts, the traffic saturation, um, and the, and the coverage area with the gains, the DB and what the coverage is, okay, if there's a particular site in town, we should know where it is.
You know what I might, you know what I might recommend? Because, because, uh, we've got, we've got Ivan Piegassek, who will be working on your behalf to review our application. I know in the past, he's worked in a similar capacity to, um, develop ordinances, and try to, try to, uh, estimate or forecast where a carrier might wanna go next. Um, he's pretty good at that, you might actually ask him that question and work through that process with him and say, hey, what parcel or cluster of parcels over here would you look for as a site acquisition specialist to design the next site?
Yeah.
Right, but, 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 but I mean, to point, that has no bearing on the application for both boards today.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other comment from board members, or any, come up from selectmen over here? We all good?
We're very good.
Okay.
All right. Do we have a public comment on this one, or?
Any public comment? Joe, do you have any, uh, anything to say, Joe? Do you wanna speak?
No, no.
Okay.
There's a field there, it's twenty-one days, right?
I'm satisfied.
Zoning chair, I mean, you, you heard it before, so.
Yeah, I'm glad.
So what's the-
What's the next?
So, motion to continue, is that reasonable?
Andy, so what's procedurally with the joint board here, what's the procedurally the next step here?
A lot of schedule coordinating, um, but ideally, so the, we just had our, a singular zoning board meeting, a just zoning board meeting right before this, and we continued that until November second. So the zoning board will already be meeting on the second. Um, I know the planning board normally meets on Tuesdays, um, I don't know, I'm very thankful all of you are here, because it makes it much easier, so you're gonna be committing to dates tonight, so we don't have quorum issues moving forward.
Yeah.
So it depends on what the boards would like to do, if you would like to do it on a planning board Tuesday, instead of a zoning board Wednesday. I haven't spoken with Ivan since the confirmation of you choosing him as the, um, peer reviewer for the RF report, I'm not sure how quickly he'll be able to turn that report around. I don't know if two weeks would be sufficient for him, I know we still have some stuff to work out on our end, as far as the escrow agreement and everything, um, so I don't know if two weeks will be too soon in that case. It might be, is that-
I think just give Ivan some time to do his work.
Okay.
I, I did just email you the signed escrow agreement.
Okay, I don't have my email up on this, because it runs too slow.
That's fine, I just, because we had that discussion before.
Yeah, okay.
I think it just slipped Derek's mind to email it to you, because it had been signed.
Okay.
So do you wanna go, go to the December meetings, is that what we're saying?
If, if, I'm, if that's what the board chooses, so that, the first-
Does that good with the applicant?
Okay.
Yeah, so that would be the first, again-
Do we, do we need another joint session, or it's, it's for a-
So, the, there's the special permit with the zoning board, there's the variance with the zoning board, and then there's the site plan review with the planning board.
Let's do it all in one meeting, if you guys can do it.
What was that, Brad?
I said, let's try to do it in one meeting if we can.
Well, at point of order, I don't think it's going to be, so, so the ZBA has their, their line of stuff to do, and then we have the site review, and then I think we should meet after all that stuff's done in another joint, because now we're together.
So then are we thinking-
Two separate meetings or one?
A planning board-only meeting in November, and then we get back together in December.
If they're finished, yeah.
Yes, which were, I'm, I would be fairly confident the RF report would be done by the December meeting.
Yeah, we think so.
Does the board, would the board like a peer review engineer for the-
For the site plan review.
For the site plan review, yeah.
The site plan.
It'll also speed it up, too.
All right, so, so for planning, we're tabling until November meeting, for ZBA, we're tabling to the December meeting.
Hold on.
Tabling or continuing?
It would be continuing.
So we'll continue.
If you're gonna do a peer review for the engineer, will he be ready for your November meeting?
No, probably not.
So is there any other reason you wanna meet with us in-
In Dec- in November?
No, I think we'd probably wanna meet with them jointly in December, I think-
Okay.
Zoning will have its own separate meeting, I think planning will have, and then we'll meet.
Yeah, once everybody's done, we'll come back.
Okay, so-
Good idea, Wally.
Okay. Okay, so, scheduling-wise, then, we're thinking a planning board meeting in December, a zoning board meeting in December, and then we reconvene together in January.
Yeah, so zoning would have to go first, and then planning.
Well, that's not how our schedule works, for, I mean, it'll be a day in between, because zoning is first Tuesday, first and third Tuesday of the month, and zoning is first Wednesday of the month.
I think you just meant getting what they're asking.
No, I realize, but it's gonna be a day before, in December.
That's fine.
Yeah.
So.
That's good.
Okay.
Zoning will be first in the planning, that's, that's good.
How does that sound with the applicant?
What days are we talking about?
So.
So, so planning would be, we continuing till December sixth, and then-
Correct.
ZBA would be continuing till December seventh. No surprises, yeah.
So, okay, so Tuesday, December sixth for planning, Wednesday, December seventh for zoning, and then tentatively, the first week of January for the next joint meeting. Tentatively, that's very far away.
We can reassemble that.
And that can be figured out later, but I do wanna get the December meetings sorted out and on everyone's calendars right away.
That sound good for everybody?
Are we looking on the timetable for the applicant? What is this timestamp?
Which one? They were all time stamped on different dates, and I can coordinate with Derek to make sure that, um-
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think on the variance, it is, could probably run into some-
Need an extension, yeah, and is the applicant willing to extend?
I think so, I just, I wanna understand what, so I know, understand the peer reviews, is there anything else you are looking for us to address between now and the next meeting? In other words, are we able to wrap it up after the peer reviews are-
We, after the peer reviews and all the comments, uh, are in, yeah, so we just wanna see what the peer reviewer-
Okay, so you're not looking for anything more from us, but we may have to react to some-
You may have to react to some comments from the engineers, yeah.
Exactly.
Is that all right? It's fine.
So, so, uh, meeting individually, sixth and seventh, planning board, zoning board respectively, and then first week of January, date to be determined, do we have that scheduled out yet for?
With it being the first week of January and vacations and holidays, I personally feel more comfortable-
Second week of January.
Maybe second week, I mean, it might be okay with the first week, but I know, I mean, I personally-
Typically, how this goes, particularly with a special permit and a site review, okay? You're gonna meet in December, we're gonna figure out, see where we are, you may be in March, depending on what has to be done up there and stuff that you didn't plan on, not that we're gonna hold you out, but that's just what the process goes, so I think, I think Andy's gonna write in December-
So we'll know more in December, schedule January.
Know a little bit more information.
You have peer reviews.
You get peer reviews, and if things go without a hiccup at all, in January, we should have the final reports, then we're gonna assess those and see if there's anything else both boards have to do, and then you might get a vote, could be then, it could be the meeting after that, so, so, but I, I think we got a lot of diligence to do, and it does take some time.
I, I would think the worst case, worst case would be sometime in February, get a vote.
Yeah, typically how this goes, unless something pops up that we don't know anything about, you know, that no one's seen.
And I don't think so, you know, where it's all impervious surface, you've got all paving.
How big's the grounding grid?
I'm sorry?
Grounding grid, how big is it?
The grounding grid, uh, will be just beyond the base of the pad itself, the foundation. The foundation, tough to say right now, probably twenty-five by twenty-five, pad here, it'll be, it'll be down, minimum by two to three feet, and then the pad, the pad itself.
And then the pad itself will probably be four, four foot thick, I'm guessing, you know, so. And then the grounding will be on that.
Do I copper connect on, or larger?
Um, well, it, it'll be, it'll be a copper, it'll be a copper grid around the foundation itself, it'll be a copper grid around the foundation of the radio equipment, the two will be connected, will be connected, there'll be a grounding well for testing. So, right from the top of the tower, there'll be a grounding rod, so everything on the tower will be grounded down to that ring, the two rings will be grounded together, fence posts are grounded to the same ring.
Right, what size conductor you're using between everything, is my question.
I don't know, yeah, we don't have construction drawings, yeah, well-
You're gonna have to build, are you gonna build the structure next to it?
Uh, no, we're outdoor cabinets, we don't do the 12 by 30 equipment shelters anymore. Everything's gotten smaller, there's, there's a, yeah, they're outdoor cabinets with a, with a, like, weather shield kinda thing over the top, basically. Yeah, no more buildings.
I will make a motion to continue application 2023-1 to December 6th in December for planning and zoning respectively.
I'll second that.
I think there's two applications out there.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'll do the- Which one did you do?
I think they're both 2023-1.
They're both 2023-1?
Oh, they are, okay.
Yep.
A and B.
Yeah, I think-
They're both, one, no A, no B.
Just one, it was easier, I was getting very confused.
So, I'll amend the motion. I'll make a motion to continue ZBA application 23-1 and planning's application 2023-1 to December 6th and 7th respectively.
So, motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Is there any vote or anything you need to take to authorize these peer reviews? Some boards have to do that in an open session.
I believe we need a vote for peer review, right?
Don't, I just, I just like the board to be like, yes, we do want it. I don't-
Yes, we do.
And then your extensions, make sure you get those.
Yeah, we'll coordinate with the extensions and do the math.
And the, the peer review fees, you're gonna work out what that is and tell us?
Yep, with Ivan, and then-
I know they don't do anything unless they've got an account set up.
Yes, and then for the planning board site plan review, we typically use TEC.
Okay.
I can get a quote from them if you want, I can get a quote from two other engineering firms as well, if you would like. Okay.
Who's doing our current cell tower?
What current cell tower? There's no, for what? What do you mean?
Our last application.
I couldn't find anyone who reviewed it.